Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December the 17th, 2024 by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Plamerville, Borough of Stockton and Towne to West Amwell and advertised in the Hunterdon County Democrat to the Print and Times newspaper. Please stand for the flag salute.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we'll go.
Jennifer Batsford?
Here.
Martha Dennis?
Here.
Gina Faschetti?
Here.
Brian Keys? Kevin Kowaleski here.
Attorney General Lyrdham?
Here.
Michael Strauss?
Here.
Roddy Tomberino?
Here.
Jim Gallagher?
Present. Uh, thanks everybody for joining us. Uh, as you can see, we have a, uh, we're very pleased to have with us a special guest, the High School Jazz Band. Did you want to say something in your way of introduction?
We're very excited. We thought it would be, um, a great evening as we honor our educators of the year to kick off with our jazz band. So I will turn it over to Mr. Steve.
The information folks behind me are the Jazz Band. Uh, two pieces to perform for you this evening was, uh, a little case that we put on Festival of the Arts a few weeks ago. Uh, the first is My Funny Valentine, which is going to feature Dylan Matz on the album tax one, followed by every little thing she does is magic, but it's two. Uh, it's going to feature me kind of nearly on the text. We hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I do. First of all, I might be the luckiest person in the school because my office is right next door to them and I could hear that all day long. It's just awesome.
So this is one of our highlights of the year for the district and for our Board of Education as we get to honor our Governor's Educator of the Year program for our teachers and our educational service, service professionals, um, who, who have gone above and beyond as far as what we expect of our staff. Staff members were nominated by their peers, parents and students. A committee was formed at each one of our schools consisting of an administrator, staff members, and a parent representative, and we use the following criteria to select each recipient. Exceptional instructional strategies, superior ability to inquire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, respect and admiration of students, parents and your colleagues, the ability to foster excellence in education as evidenced by ongoing contributions and the overall learning environment. At this time, I'm going to introduce each one of our building principals so that they could introduce their educator and educator service professionals of the year. I would ask that after you are introduced, you would come up and you can make your way around the inside of the table to shake hands with all of our board members, and then we have a little special gift for you as well. Um, and then I would also ask at the end, once we're done with all of our introductions, uh, our honorees, if we can have you go out into the hallway and we'd like to get a picture. So we'll start out first with the middle school on location and Mr. Dave Miller, Principal.
Good evening. So first I would like to acknowledge Cindy Zidzik. Cindy has been an exemplary ESL teacher at West Amwell School and the Middle School on Location for the past nine years and has served the district at the high school prior to that. Her enthusiasm and creativity are evident in her engaging lessons and interaction with her multilingual learners. She has positively impacted students in grades kindergarten all the way through high school seniors. Cindy has also served the South Hunterdon Schools as part of our ESL Parent Advisory Committee for many years, connecting our community to our schools, our students and our families. She has been an asset to our elementary teachers as an advocate for her students, a collaborator and a strong communicator and champion of her students' assets. For all this and more, we congratulate you on the honor of Governor's Educator of the Year. Next, I would like to honor Yvonne Penna. As a paraprofessional, Yvonne has been able to enhance learning and transform students in our classrooms. She has supported students understanding that each student is unique and possesses their own interests, strengths and challenges. Yvonne has worked with multiple grade levels and has supported students with a variety of educational needs. This year, Yvonne can be seen guiding and empowering our preschool students. Yvonne has created a culture around her that is warm, supportive and carries the highest expectations. Congratulations on the honor of Governor's Educational Support Professional of the Year.
Next, we'll be, we will be doing South Hunterdon Regional Elementary School. Unfortunately, Ms. Canionis is at her son's championship basketball game this evening. So Ms. Jane Ellen Lennon is going to sub in for her.
Good evening, members of the board, the Jazz Band and teachers and our community. It is such a pleasure to, um, stand in for Ms. Canionis, um, because these two people that I'm just about to introduce to you are unbelievable educators in all aspects of the word. This evening, South Hunterdon Elementary School, on behalf of Ms. Q. Dear Ms. Jamison, I cannot express enough how proud I am of the dedication, expertise you have consistently demonstrated throughout your many years at LPS and South Elementary. Your work and commitment to your students are remarkable, and it's no surprise that you have been honored as Teacher of the Year. I do not doubt that you will continue to be progressive and inspiring educator for many years to come. You have brought so much to the students of South Hunterdon, not just as a teacher, but also as a proud product of South Hunterdon yourself. Your passion and dedication resonate deeply with both your colleagues and your students. At South Elementary, we emphasize teamwork. You are an integral part of our team. Your contributions and hard work significantly impact us, and we are incredibly fortunate to have you with us. Thank you, Ms. Jamison, for all you do. You are genuinely, excuse me, genuinely an asset to education. And she did not note that Ms. Jamison was also one of the judges at the Night of the Net, which was wonderful to see her there. So thank you.
Now a few words about our Support Professional of the Year at South Elementary, Councilor Cortina. We are fortunate to have Councilor Cortina not just as a counselor, but as a counselor with a background in teaching. As a kindergarten teacher, no doubt. Councilor Cortina is a support professional who works daily to support our students, teachers and families. Councilor Cortina is an exceptional counselor who has always prioritized her students and created an environment where students feel valued. I am confident Councilor Cortina will continue to make an incredible impact on students and her colleagues. Councilor Cortina has always approached her role with utmost dedication and passion, which adds to the positive environment at South Elementary. Congratulations, Councilor Cortina. There's probably nobody who you can share as many laughs and tears with as Councilor Cortina, so we applaud her.
And the Principal for our High School, seventh and eighth grade as well, Jen McKnight.
I'd first like to recognize Mr. Brian Riley. Mr. Brian Riley has been recognized as South Hunterdon's Educator of the Year, a testament to his dedication and impact both in the classroom and on the field. As a passionate social studies teacher, he brings history to life, inspiring students to think critically and engage with their world around them. Beyond the classroom, he serves as our assistant football coach, mentoring student athletes and instilling values of teamwork, perseverance and sportsmanship. Mr. Riley's unwavering commitment to his students, both academically and athletically, make him an invaluable part of South Hunterdon community, and we are proud to celebrate his well-earned achievement.
Next, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Kristen Interbeadis. Mrs. Kristen Interbeadis is our dedicated pre-K through 12th grade speech language pathologist, and she is being honored as South Hunterdon Service Professional of the Year. With unwavering commitment, she supports students in developing vital communication skills, ensuring their success both academically and socially. Her passion for speech language development and her individualized approach to each student's needs makes a profound impact across all grade levels. Mrs. Interbeadis' dedication, expertise and compassionate care truly embody excellence in education, and we are incredibly proud to celebrate her well-deserved recognition.
So again, just a congratulations to all of our honorees and just to let everyone know, they will, they're not done yet. So they will be accompanying me along with all of our other Hunterdon County Educational Professionals of the Year um, for a, a great luncheon in May at Raspberry's, uh, right outside of Flemington. Will they be able to be honored with the rest of their colleagues throughout all of Hunterdon County? So again, congratulations and I look forward to that.
And whereas the Southern Regional School Board of Education is recognizing three educators of the year and three educational service professionals of the year for their exceptional dedication, leadership and impact on student learning, now therefore be it resolved that the South Hunterdon Regional School District Board of Education hereby formally recognizes and honors the following educators of the year, Lindley Jamison, Cindy Vidzik and Brian Riley, and the following educational service professionals of the year, Melissa Cortina, Yvonne Penna and Kristen Interbeadis. Be it further resolved that the South Hunterdon Regional School District Board of Education extended sincere graduation, uh, gratitude to them and appreciation to all of the educators of the year and educational service professionals of the year for their tireless efforts and commitment to our students and community. Uh, be it further resolved that South Hunterdon Regional School District Board of Education will publicly recognize and celebrate the educators of the year and educational service professionals of the year honorees at the March 17th, 2025 board meeting adopted March 17th, 2025. So again, thank you, everybody. Oh, God, uh, that's, that's, that's fine. I'm still timing this.
Under four minutes. I know. Kind of board member getting on this? No way? You didn't see nothing?
All right, next up on our agenda this evening, we have our report from our student representative to the board.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, for our sports, our winners, our winter sports, I guess, our winter sports have finished. So our spring sports have started last week and they are getting on their way. Our winter, our spring sports are middle school and high school softball, middle school and high school baseball, track and field, and call. Um, we heard back from, um, and we got our, our winter sports. Students, they've been recognized by the Skyline Conference All-Conference. Our second team, Noah Let, and Noah Cormier for wrestling, and our honorable mentions Milo Dob and Parker Rampell also for wrestling. Um, this month, our National Honor Society had an induction ceremony for all the new members. There were speeches from the president and the respected vice presidents, speaking of the four pillars and encouraging all students to carry those with them everywhere they go. Um, the biggest event arguably of the school year, Night of the Nets, was finished off last weekend. Um, this is, this is an annual event between two teams, our blue and our steel team, and they came up with creative dances to fit the theme of a night on Broadway. They also competed in different events such as tic-tac-toe and tug-of-war and other relays. Our blue team eventually took home the coveted egg trophy with an impressive, impressive final score of one hundred and forty-six to one hundred and twenty, winning by twenty-six points. And tomorrow, and still in March, so tomorrow is our college fair. Um, South Hunterden Association College Fair with over ninety colleges this year. This is post, this is open for both tenth and eleventh grade, and the peer leaders are going to help, um, the college representatives through this school and hopefully find their way. Um, that is it. That's everything that's happened so far with our students. Thank you.
I would, I would note that one of the first things you mentioned was the red one team and that there was four kids who made an all-conference team, like a team of honorable mentions. This is our first year of having wrestling in the Marquee Court since the late nineties or maybe two thousand.
Two thousand.
Uh, so, I mean, the, the fact that they were able to have four teams do so well without really having, you know, over the wrestling program, still getting up and running.
It's a huge accomplishment.
And also I would say that, man, that was a lot of fun. Yeah, I hope, I hope we do it again next year because it was the fifteenth year.
Yes.
As I said, and it was, um, it was just a lot of fun, and I think all the kids had a great time and could see fantastic sportsmanship throughout the night.
I also just wanted to, again, echo something Lucas said. A shout out to our counseling department because, for Babe Peterson and for Dana Cack. Tomorrow, we have ninety-two colleges that are coming and we're going to be, we've actually partnered with New Hope-Soulberry, so they're sending over some of their students as well. And we're going to have colleges in this room, we're going to have colleges in our gym, and then colleges in our library. So all of our tenth and eleventh graders will get to experience that. So to have ninety-two colleges in one place is a pretty awesome accomplishment.
Is there a list of the colleges?
There is. So I actually was going to put it on a slide, but it was too long, but I will share with everyone. Yep. It's an impressive place.
Um, so next up, we'll have our PTO and our LAF updates. Um, I'll start with the LAF.
How you doing, Tom Vicki, Treasure of the LAF? Um, thanks for having me. Uh, reminder, March twenty-ninth, six P M. is our annual casino, our auction. We're adding a casino night as part of it. Uh, it includes, uh, hors d'oeuvres, beer and wine, a featured cocktail, five hundred dollars worth of casino money. So don't get crazy. All right, uh, the auction includes silent and live items, uh, including a week of summer camp at Artseed Studio, a laser tag party, dinners and overnight stays. Uh, and whether you could attend or not, best of live tickets are available. So if you don't know what best of live is, that is where if you win the best of live, you get to pull one item out of the auction ahead of time, and that's yours. Um, those tickets are sold, uh, as well. And they can be bought from any board member. So, uh, again, that's the twenty-ninth, and then one special addition this year, DJ Tom will be, uh, doing a set at the, uh, casino auction night. So come check that out. I have some helpers coming to help me a little bit. All right, and we have plenty of tickets left, so expect to see all of you there. Um, other news, uh, we've done some grants recently. Uh, we did a STEM teacher professional development, and we're looking forward to hear back how that went. We did a trout environmental studies grant where you grow from eggs and release the local waterways. And we did two physics grants, one for the eighth grade and one for the twelfth grade, uh, both with onsite events. Uh, the eighth graders are going into Somerset and the eleventh and twelfth, uh, are going to Six Flags um, with schools from around the state. So again, that's our update. So March twenty ninth, six P M., we are at the Amwell Firehouse in Ringos this year. The right of the road, so pretty close.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I'm Jessica Hartigan, PTO. Just wanted to start off by saying congratulations to all of our educators of the year and a great job to the jazz band. Um, our next kids' night out, um, it was moved. It was supposed to be last Friday, but it's this Friday, March twenty-first. From six-thirty to eight-thirty, registration is open on Membership Toolkit. I'm going to do a lot of repeating myself just because we have a lot of upcoming events. Um, on Friday, March seventh, the PTO put together a luncheon for the district ballness day. Um, it was really nice seeing all the staff together and, and it was a really cool, we just got to see like them scurrying between their classes, but it was a really nice thing that the district did for everybody and everyone seemed really happy, so. Um, our, we're in week two of enrichment and it's, it's been interesting. Um, it's going really, really well. We learned a lot in week one. You can have as many lists and be as organized as you want to on paper, but you cannot control where children go and. Um, but we have thirteen classes and we're serving just under a hundred students, so that's a big deal, and I'm really proud of the after-school enrichment committee and the team of wonderful people that I got to work with. It's a really big accomplishment to do what we did and I just wanted to say thank you for the, to the elementary school staff for their patience while we worked out the kinks in the first week. Week two is going much smoother with dismissal and attendance. Um, and thank you to Mrs. Q and Heather and Mr. Nicholas for putting up with us and having to put up with us for the next nine weeks. Um, and a huge thank you to Marcella and Lee for their dedication to the students in our district. They give so, so much of their time. Um, we're there three days a week, um, from two forty-five until five o'clock. Um, on top of baseball and softball and all the other things, so it's, it's wonderful that we have such dedicated community members and parents. Um, and then, as you know from my last statement, um, we started planning for the fall. We started reaching out to current enrichment teachers. We have most of them locked in for the fall. Um, and if anyone in this room knows of anyone who would like to teach next year, or if anyone would like to teach a class, it's, it's really, it's amazing and it's really rewarding to see all of them and what we can offer to, to everybody. And the fact that it's accessible to everybody. Walkathon, again, a lot of repeating myself is, at the elementary school is Friday, April twenty-fifth, with a rain date of Friday, May second. Um, and then Walkathon, five through twelve, will be up here at South, Tuesday, May twentieth. We have a meeting to discuss that tomorrow and what that looks like. Um, and it's really exciting because one of the biggest things with having a district-wide PTO was being able to do things district-wide. So it's really exciting that we're able to, to do that and bring that to all the students. Um, couple of the middle school, um, on location end of the year events, one of them has changed. Um, but the fifth and sixth grade dance and activity night will be, uh, Friday, May thirtieth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty. It is a drop-off event. Um, DJ, candy bar, glow sticks, treats, all kinds of outdoor activities. Um, the sixth grade class trip has changed, um, from Friday, June sixth to Thursday, June fifth. Um, the middle school end of the year picnic is Friday, June thirteenth, directly following school. And uh, field day at the elementary school is Friday, May sixteenth. Field day at, um, did I say field day? Sorry, my head is like spinning after today. But field day at the middle school on location is Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, and we're still working out the details with Ms. Ryan. Um, penny wars at the elementary school and the middle school on location start tomorrow. Um, the elementary school is Super Mario Brothers themed, and we actually put that together today during enrichment, and it looks really cool. The kids are going to be really excited. All of the jugs are outside of the media center, so they can bring their coins in and put them in there, and the winning class gets a prize. Um, it will be like a pizza party or an ice cream party or something to that effect. The middle school on location theme is March Madness. They put that together today. Um, they have a twist with theirs. They can, um, they can sabotage the other classes, so there's one jar that they can put it into and then one jar that they can sabotage and take away from the other classes. And all of, half of the money raised will go to, um, a special project that the fifth and sixth graders are working on. They chose, their community project was, um, to help animal shelters, so they'll be able to take half of the money raised, um, pre-K through sixth and donate it, and it will be to the animal shelter of their choosing. And we'll work on that with, um, Mr. Hollahan. And then, um, one of the other amazing things is our pre-K, pre-K events committee, they are on it. And, um, they, we've been wanting to do a touch-a-truck event forever and they finally, like, it's happening. So that is Friday, April eleventh, from nine to eleven-thirty, and that includes pre-K and kindergarten district-wide. And then their, um, activity day or field day is going to be Wednesday, May twenty-first. That is it.
Just a couple of things I, I want to say, and I've said it before, but I can't say it enough. You know, we, I can remember, I don't know, a year and a half ago, almost two years, when we were meeting about this vision of a district PTO and how that would look. I can't even put into words how much it's exceeded our expectations. I mean, the amount of work that they've done. And a staff member, I think, said it best to me about a week ago, like, that Jess Hartigan never stops. Right? So like, between the luncheon, which was unbelievable for the staff development day, the enrichment program, you know, one of our goals of the strategic plan was to engage our community. And the fact that half of the individuals that are facilitating activities and enrichment are from our community, you know, beyond just our staff, is just awesome. So I can't thank you enough. I mean, it's just, it's been incredible this year. It really has. So thank you so much.
Um, correspondents, we did have, uh, several letters of the month that have been posted online for the public review. Um, we, uh, next comes the approval of the minutes for the February regular meeting and executive meeting. Can I have the motion to approve those now?
So moved.
I need a second, I need a second on the minutes. Favor? Opposed? Okay, with that, uh, we'll come to the superintendent's update.
We're actually going to do the, yeah, the student safety data system. So this is something we have to report on, uh, twice a year. What we'll do is I'll go through the slides that I have, and then there is a special public comment just for this report. So we'll open up, uh, public comments, see if there's any comment on the report, and then I'll do my superintendent update, and then we'll do our normal public comment. So this, the data that you're going to see in front of you is only for reporting period one. So it's from September to December of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then what will happen is in October of next year, um, I will do the full year report. So just to kind of give a little bit of background, I know it's tough to see, but keep in mind I'll send this out tomorrow. So if we have an incident, um, involving, for example, HIV or harassment, intimidation, and bullying, whether it's alleged or confirmed, it doesn't matter, we have to report both. If we had an issue with substance abuse, if we had an issue with violence or vandalism, these are all things that were required in the state of New Jersey to report. It's called an SSDS form, um, and that just stands for Student Safety Data Systems. And we actually submit this information to the state twice a year, once mid-year, um, at the end of December, and then again at the end of the school year, and then this data is logged in, um, the state system from year to year. So this is what the form looks like. Um, this kind of gives you a little bit of background of what we have to report, and then this is the HIV portion where basically we have to give the information about the HIV, whether or not, whether or not it was investigated within ten days, and then obviously if there was an issue with HIV, what category it fell into and the criteria and things along the line. So I wanted to report, and this is good news to report, um, up through December, uh, we've only had one substance abuse issue, uh, at the middle school, high school, and we had one issue of, uh, violence. Keep in mind, violence can be a threat, different things along the line, physical confrontation. Uh, and we've only had two HIV reports. Um, so that is something that we've been focusing on throughout the year, and I'll share in my next slide. You'll be able to see kind of the comparison from last year of what our data looked like. Uh, actually, up to this point, we only have three HIDs, um, in the district for the year, going in the, you know, the middle of March. So, and out of the two that we've had that are reported on this form, obviously the other one was after December, so we reported the second half of the year. Neither one of these two were actually confirmed as an HIV, so they were reported based on the criteria that we use. So when you look at our data from last year, you know, we had nineteen HIV, and the year before we had twenty HIV reports. So, um, obviously that's a pretty significant decrease in the numbers. So, uh, you'll see on my next slide, I really do credit our counseling department and our staff and our administration based on the programming that we brought in, because we put a lot of emphasis on this as we focused in it as well as on the substance offense. Well, look at last year, did have thirteen substance offenses for the year. So we talk about, you know, I kind of really took a look at over the last two years, what are all the different things that we've done? And who are the people that are responsible for? So obviously, we're fortunate that we have counselors in all of our schools and more than one, obviously, in this building. We hired several years ago a mental health clinician just to focus on student mental health issues and also supporting families with family counseling. We have a student assistance counselor, who one of their main focuses is on substance abuse. We have our anti-bullying specialists. We have our threat assessment team. We have a school climate team in each building, and then one of our goals this year for the district is we have an SCL committee, which will be making a recommendation on a character education program that will be implemented next year, K-12. So we have a lot of people that are responsible for this, and then we look at programs, and quite honestly, a lot of the programs on this list were funded by LAF, um, almost all of them. So Challenge Day, which was two years ago, that our, our students went through in ninth, or eighth and ninth grade. Uh, we had an assembly for Feed the Change with, um, feeling last year for, um, ninth graders and eighth graders. We had Canfield Productions, and if you want, if you're interested, when I send this out, you can click on the links. That was an elementary one. Prevention Resources was here this year, you know, Don't Get Babe. We did a Healthy Choices Week, which used to be called Red Ribbon Week, but now we call it Healthy Choices Week, just working with our students, you know, about making healthy choices. We had a phenomenal presentation just recently called Coming Up For Air, um, through Attitudes in Reverse, which is our therapy dog program. So Trish Baker came, um, and did an incredible program for about an hour with our eighth grade students and, uh, brought some of the dogs with her as well, but just really talking about the different challenges of mental health and, um, you know, recognizing signs and symptoms and the stigma that goes along with it. Uh, it was a really awesome program. Week of Respect, which we do each and every year in October. Ball in the House, which I know the LAF just funded, has come into our elementary. It's an R and B and soul and pop and a cappella group that focuses on character education. Last year, we had I N Query, um, which focuses on our, um, you know, Abilities Week. Last year, we had I N Query, um, which focuses on our, um, you know, Abilities Week. The Hundred and Safe School Act that students can utilize to report, and obviously, Timothy Roar, who came last year, focused on disability, inclusion and acceptance, and then Dr. Paul, who's coming uh, towards the end of the year, June for our elementary about, you know, never let your attitude become a disability. So again, a lot of time and effort has been put into this. Um, the good news is the data is showing that what we are doing is working. Again, it's a credit for our building administration, our teachers, and then more importantly, our counseling staff. We put a lot of time and effort into working with our students. So this is the first part of the report. Obviously, as I mentioned, next October, I'll give you the full year's data, January through June. Um, hopefully, our numbers continue in the same pattern. So I'll open it up to the board. Any questions about the presentation, and then we'll open it up the public comment.
No question, but it's an amazing conference. It really represents a lot of work and, um, also represents, it's really, um, shifting. And that's, um, not easy to do, so that's one.
There are no questions from the board. We'll take questions from the public if you would like to come up and, um, ask a question. Um, just as you come to the podium, just like in a regular public comment period, um, commenting only on this presentation. Um, just let us know your, uh, and, um,
We are, if you don't have any comments, um, then, uh, So super presented a bunch of different things, but as I've mentioned before, I didn't want to just kind of highlight this. Um, Jim had mentioned, Lucas had mentioned, like, the nest. Uh, it was a great night. It really was. I'm hoping if you didn't have an opportunity, I tried to, you know, put out as many real videos of all the different events, um, you know, to the community on our Facebook and Instagram pages. But I think it, you know, that I just presented, this is a big part of it, right? Like, all of our kids coming together. Obviously, like the sportsmanship, and at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter who won and who lost. It was just two great nights of fun with kids. Um, and, you know, a shout out to our advisors, uh, Mr. Har, Ms. Orsella, um, Mr. Schluter and the Spills, they did an awesome job too. Like, there's, I mean, we've been here and you can hear them down there practicing for weeks. Um, and every year, it's kind of funny, it's the same thing. We always add, how's it going? I don't know. I don't know if they're going to dance and if they're going to pull it, and they just always pull it together. And, uh, it was, it was awesome. I thought it was the best year that we've had since I've been here. So, um, you know, as Jim said, you know, this will be a tradition that hopefully will continue for a long, long time. Because it truly does bring, not only the building, but we got a lot of community members in. You know, I noticed people in the stands that don't have kids in the school, but just came to see the event, if they had been coming for years. Uh, and it was an awesome fight. So again, kudos to everyone involved. So I wanted to give an update on our play school principal search, uh, just some details. So just a couple of things, the posting actually closed today. We've had a total of fifty-six applicants who've applied for this position. Um, interviews will take place all day on April second and third. Uh, we've selected fourteen applicants to interview, so we interview in seven applicants each day. Each interview slot will be forty-five minutes, so it will be a long day for our folks that are doing the interviews. We have a committee of twelve people that's made up of staff, administrators, teachers, parents. Um, the twelve individual, um, will be conducting the forty-five minute interviews for each one of the candidates. Um, our goal is hopefully out of that process to select two to three finals that would move on to the next round. The goal is if all goes well, I would make a recommendation to the board at our April twenty-eighth meeting. And then the successful candidates will be in line to start on July first, two thousand twenty-five. So by the time we meet again, um, you know, hopefully, we'll be bringing a candidate to the board, uh, to vote on. And we'll have an individual in place as we prepare for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Budget update. So we did a board work session on February twenty-sixth. I just want to remind the public, um, the presentation that I did at that work session is available online on Board Docs. So if you have any questions about what was in that, or you want to look at it, just go to Board Docs, go on the work session for February twenty-sixth, and it's there on the agenda. Uh, our state aid numbers were released the next day on February twenty-seventh. Uh, I'm happy to report that we did get an increase of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in one hundred, three hundred and fifty, one hundred and ten. We added that two hundred and seventy thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-one thousand was an increase for school choice aid for our school choice program. Um, we have been instructed by the county, uh, business administrator and superintendent to anticipate a twenty-five percent decrease in federal funding. Uh, unfortunately, we don't get that information till after the budget is struck, which is in May, June, which does make it challenging. Uh, our preliminary budget is on the finance agenda this evening with a recommendation of two point five percent for a tax levy increase. So at the work session, we discussed some of the waivers that are available, the allowances for us to go above the two percent cap. One of those things specifically is that we had eleven percent increase in our medical prescription for our health benefits. So at this point, um, that's the recommendation for a two point five percent increase. The way the process works, the preliminary budget needs to be submitted to the county by tomorrow for review. The public budget presentation will take place on Monday, April twenty-eighth at the Board of Education meeting, and then with the board voting on the final budget. Realizing that changes can be made from now until the final budget vote on April twenty-eighth. So really, um, you know, the county process is more of a placeholder where we have to submit something, so we put it in as a placeholder. But there will continue to be discussions over the next five to six weeks, and if there's any changes that are made, that will be presented as part of the April twenty-eighth public presentation for the community. So, uh, you know, just what I'll share quickly, two, two point five percent, the rationale there was that, um, one, the twenty-five percent in our state aid production, and two, uh, really three things. Two, the increase in the eleven percent for medical prescription, and three, the fact that we are in negotiations with our largest bargaining unit. And obviously, if you look at what our state and county averages are right, are right now, they're well above two percent. So we have to take that into consideration as the complete negotiation process, that hopefully will be done by the end of the school year. Plan accordingly when we're building our budget. All right. And then my last topic I'm going to get into is a little bit about South Hunter Regional Middle School's schedule. All right. So our five-eight building, which obviously you're following along, will open in September. Um, just a couple of details that I wanted to provide is that our student day will be very similar to our high school. Right now, it's estimated seven fifty to two fifty, but it's going to probably be in line very close to our high school. Class periods will be somewhere in between forty-eight to fifty minutes. We're still kind of working through that. Our school buses, so the way we're going to work our buses is we will divide our drivers in half, and half of them will be transporting middle school students. And the other half will be transporting high school students. So we're not mixing fifth with tenth and eleventh graders. It's going to be separate rotations, and the fact that we're not sharing buses will allow each one of us to arrive and dismiss at the same time, rather than have to stagger that we were sharing a bus. So Amanda Brown, who's our transportation coordinator, has really been working on this since summer, doing, you know, we have a software program where we can run, you know, different, you know, iterations of how this is going to work, but she's been working on that for months. Uh, and the nice thing is next year, for our students who are in grades five to twelve, since we will be one campus, they will be able to all utilize the laybuses at five fifteen. So whether they're staying for clubs or activities or sports or whatever it may be, um, right now only seven to twelve, but now next year, five to twelve will be able to do that. So just to give you a little bit of, you know, a window into the schedule, um, so this is just a sample for fifth and sixth grade. So what you'll notice is a seven-period day. There's a lunch block. There's an accelerate block, so if you're familiar with accelerate with the elementary school and Flex at the High School, it will be very similar. More in line with the elementary and the way the elementary is set up. So the accelerate block will be thirty minutes every day, where students will be getting what they need in intervention and enrichment and all kinds of different things. Um, you'll also notice something interesting. We are providing students with wellness, PE and health every day, five days a week for forty-eight to fifty minutes, which we think, especially at the middle school, is really important. Sometimes when you look at middle school schedules, um, in other districts, you wouldn't see that. You might only see PE maybe two times a week or three times a week, which we felt was really important. Um, and then you have all your query classes, you know, your language arts, your math, your social studies and your science. And then as you get into middle school, we really start to talk in fifth and sixth grade about exploratories. So what does that mean, right? So you're going to see the word exploratory in fifth and sixth grade, and then the word elective in seventh and eighth. The goal in fifth and sixth, try to expose students to as many different things as we can for them to hopefully by the time they get to seventh and eighth, and definitely by the time they get to ninth, to start kind of following a pathway of where they really have areas of interest. Right? So there's not a lot of choice in fifth and sixth grade, um, because we really want to expose them to as many things as we can. We will have world language, and the students will choose from either French or Spanish for world language. They'll have that for ninety days, right? So it will rotate in an A-day rotation with something else. Now, in this mock schedule, I just gave an example of STEM. Doesn't necessarily mean that it will be married to STEM. Could be, you know, their art or their music, depending upon how the schedule plays out. Um, and then you see that period seven, so again, that's where the exploratory, so they're going to get STEM or music every fifth and sixth grader in some capacity. Right? And they'll rotate to reach one of those for ninety days in their schedule. Um, and then the hope is by the time they get to seventh and eighth grade, they're going to have more opportunities and more choice. First of all, what you'll notice is PE wellness is still five days a week, forty-eight to fifty minutes. You'll also notice a significant change in world language. World language is now every day, five days a week, all year long, right? So if you're building a world language program at the high school level, and you want your students to be able to access AP and some of the higher level courses, they really do need to start having it every day in seventh and eighth grade. It's difficult to have it for a marking period or every other day. This can't cover the amount of curriculum that we need to cover. So it will be every day, um, you know, five days a week. And then you'll see that, obviously, the accelerate block, but then the elective, they're going to have some more choices. So now they'll have band fire, arts, STEM, ag, FFA program, which is still alive and well, and a lot's happening there. And then our intro to theater program. So, you know, you heard me last month talk about the Performing Arts Academy. Theater has been a huge hit this year. Obviously, we just had an unbelievable spring musical, Matilda. So we will be, you know, exposing students to that in seventh and eighth grade. So they'll really make the choice, right? So whatever elective they pick, and again, this is just a mock schedule, doesn't mean all their elective periods are going to be period seven. It could be two or three or five, depending upon grade level and how the schedule plays out, but they're going to make some choices, right? So if I'm a student and I really want to do art and I really want to do STEM, I'm going to take that for ninety days each. So I'm going to have one for half the year and the other for half the year. You know, if I want to do band and I want to do theater, like, there's all kinds of different options depending upon what students are going to select. So again, many different things. Um, you know, students want to do band and choir, we'll probably be able to work that out as well with even possibly another elective where they could rotate on their, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they could rotate between band and choir, and Tuesday, Thursday, have something else. Then it flip flops the next day. There's a lot of different choices. I think this is really important. So the counseling support, which we just talked about, and the benefits that we're reaping from that, we're going to have two counselors at the middle school, so two, one for fifth and sixth grade, Mrs. Sarcey, and then Mrs. Fenimore for seventh and eighth grade. Uh, we're fortunate that our class sizes are small, so when you're talking about, you know, I know Miss Sarcey came from a district where her caseload was five hundred, six hundred kids, right? How do you get to know five or six hundred kids? That's really hard to do. So the fact that we're going to have two counselors, be able to really get to know our students, work with them and support them, that's going to be a huge benefit for us. A huge benefit for our kids. And then extracurricular activities. So this is really exciting. So in the fall, our planning golf or soccer, field hockey and cross-country, the grades six, seven and eight, right? So not just seven and eight, six, seven and eight. In the wintertime, basketball wrestling, grade six through eight. There might even be a potential with wrestling, depending upon what our numbers look like in the beginning, to extend that down to fifth grade. Um, spring, baseball, softball and track, so they have a track program for our middle school along with our high school, grade six, three. And then we plan on running intermurals for grades five, three in the fall and the spring. So if you're a student who maybe just isn't into the, you know, after-school, five-days-a-week sport thing, but you still want to do some type of intermural, you're going to have the ability to do that all four years, depending upon, you know, what your preference is. And again, as I mentioned before, all these students that are engaged in these programs will be able to use the laybuses at the end of the day. And then, right now, we talk about co-curricular. We have yearbook, Odyssey of the Mind, which is an awesome activity um, for students, coding club, student council, FFA club, art club, chess club. We're going to have a, a middle school musical. So rather than just one musical, we're going to have a, a middle school and a high school musical. Um, we started this year Eagle Ambassadors Program, which is what's very similar to like the peer leadership program. Crazy H Robotics Dance Club, a talent show, science and athletics. So there's going to be a lot of activities for students to do, whether it's clubs, whether it's sports, whether it's intermurals. The hope is that we'll be able to have as many students as we possibly can engaged in some type of extracurricular activity, and then they will have transportation that goes along with it. So there's no reason why they can't participate. We're really excited about that. These are really important dates. I'm just tip, I'm just, tonight's just tip of the iceberg. We're going to really dig in a lot deeper to what a middle school is all about, middle school philosophy and all the other things that go along with it. So on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth at seven PM in the high school auditorium, this is for our parents and students in grades five and seven. So if you have a fifth, sixth or seventh grader, you would come to this program. We're going to get a lot more detail into the middle school. Have the ability to answer questions that you might have. And then we're also going to do just a separate parent night for our fourth grade parents. We're going to do it at SHRES at the library, um, and that's on Wednesday, April ninth at seven PM. Uh, in the future, obviously, we would have these programs in the new middle school, but obviously, this year, we can't get in there yet. Obviously, moving forward, starting next year, we will have a great visibility. So we'll continue to get this out. I know we've gotten some information out about this already. We'll continue to remind parents, um, because it's the opportunity. Will they really be able to dig into all the different aspects of the middle school, the, yeah, specific curriculum questions, all those different things. Um, these are great evenings to be able to do that. And then we'll be starting our, you know, we've already started the master schedule process, and individual students will be working with, parents and students will have to make some selections in on course. So we'll be supporting, you know, especially our fifth, sixth, or sixth and seventh grade, um, parents to make those selections in on course. Um, and we'll be moving forward and, and ready to go for next year. Any questions from the board? Got anything I presented? Any of the slide?
I'm one, really pleased to see how thoughtful it is now moving from middle school into high school and how you, how, not only in academics, but also, uh, extracurricular activities that you, we're moving kids for success to high school. Um, the extracurricular, I know that there is a, a lot of, uh, communication to us about wrestling. Glad to see that on there. I just want to make sure I know we do have the budget, uh, preliminary budget on this evening. We have budgeted for that program in there and for all the supplies.
Wrest- wrestling is open to girls too. I feel like we need.
There's some, there is some changes coming from NJ SIA. So, yeah, starting with next year, so I will share that with them. So in essence, what will happen is, and Eric, you jump in because you, we were communicating about this. Um, in the past, you would have, you could have a girl on your wrestling team. Uh, now what's going to happen is there are a lot of bigger districts, uh, that now have girls wrestling.
Yeah, it's getting pretty big. That's why I was wondering.
So what they're hoping is that everyone does that, but for us, obviously, we're not as big, so the chances of doing that may not be, you know, like it would be for a bigger district. So if we have a female who is on the team and we don't have a female team,
Right.
Then we would have to communicate with other schools to see whether or not they have a female team, and if they do, they have someone who maybe they could send to wrestle. But it's a little bit more complicated than it used to be. Uh,
Well, I think, uh, and just to add on, I think it does raise the question about equity. Equity, gender equity when it comes to sports and middle school. So in the budget, if we're going to be adding a lot of money to wrestling for middle school. I think that even if we have a female on the team. Now it's going to be very separate, and so I think the choice for the board is going to have to be somewhat of a balancing. Between wrestling and another opportunity for girls. Because I think we, we all know that wrestling. As a co-ed sport has. Been named a co-ed sport, but in practice is. Barely close to a coeds. So I think it raises the question about. What our girls have access to during that time period that. You know, is is fairly equitable from a. Gender perspective.
Uh, I mean, does this affect us at the high school level as well? So do we have, I know that there's girls' basketball during the winter, is there another?
Just boys basketball or?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to see if there's what the other opportunities.
I would.
I believe there's.
In the fall, there's. Maybe sound during the cross country. There was winter trials.
Yeah, there is.
Winter track. I'm sorry, I do, I just.
And all this all kicking down within the last month.
Yeah, we just, I read about.
And again, it wasn't a first season within J S I A.
I just want to say in the fall, we have soccer, field hockey and cross-country. So there. There's no boys field hockey. And there's two co-ed sports, so maybe at the end of the day it evens out. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, Erin, but I also think if you look at the whole picture, maybe. There, you know, there's equal opportunities if you look at the entire year. Um, but also don't grow to, so the girls can no longer wrestle the boys. Oh, okay.
Absolutely not, nothing would not even with permission slips from parents, nothing.
Yeah.
That's N J S I A.
Yeah, well, they need to get their stuff together.
Right.
Because they're.
And so other teams.
And I've seen a lot of about girls wrestling at other schools, so I'm just wondering.
My daughter plays softball with two girls who wrestle a hundred percent. And they have two girls. So it's over two now, right? Well, and and actually my daughter was interested, she played basketball, but she was interested in possibly wrestling.
Yeah.
Um, but I will say this. Uh, obviously, this is all known, I didn't know that, uh, change either. But, um, when our wrestling program started at high school. Our coaches, really, that was kind, we had very few kids and. They, that was kind of what they did was they mixed and matched and found opportunities. For our kids to go and wrestle, even though they didn't have a full team. Right? And even though we, and it started as a JV sport, so. You know, I think there is a possibility there that. We could have. You know, perhaps that can be done again. Finding opportunities if there are girls itself or interested in wrestling. I think it's a, I wrestle in high school, I think it's a great sport.
I think one thing I want to. Make sure maybe that we change is rather than saying if there's girls that are interested, maybe also letting girls know that it is a girl's sport. Too kind of thing, you know what I mean? Because I, I feel like. Constantly when I've seen, let's talk about a wrestling program, like. There's no girls this year, I just, I kind of thought maybe. But I, I think it's important to let, let them know that it's a girl.
So I'll follow up with Jason, no worries, already, he can, maybe I'll invite him to come and kind of. Do an overview of our athletics.
Yeah.
As far as. You know, where we are as far as opportunities and then he probably could share more. He goes to N J S I meetings twice a month. Or as what other schools are doing, and how we can go further with that.
And I think if he came, it would be interesting to see the participation by gender. Um, sort of to Gina's point about, you know. It's, it's, it's the concept of. What's available versus who participates, right? And who participates? Wrestling is the perfect example, it's a co-ed sport this year, but who actually participates, we know are a majority boys. So I think that it's that, um, de facto impact. Versus actual.
The same point, though, we have, if we have a dance team, which is technically co-ed.
Yeah, I didn't know we did.
See. Are there boys participating?
Exactly.
And if we're looking at equity, let's look at that as well.
Well, we have to balance the two, kind of like I said to Gina's point.
But to, to Jim's point as well, so my kid, one of my kids was on middle school soccer, um, and. It was a co-ed team this year, so finding teams to play with was not. Easy, so they, they didn't work out a good schedule for that.
And it was co-ed, it's a bummer now, the hope is because we're opening up the sixth grade, maybe that changes that.
I think, yeah.
I, I know that would do.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, I. I think these are all. Things that we need to think about, we need to address, obviously, but I also think that. You know, starting a wrestling program, and especially given that probably the majority of. Kids who are interested in doing it are boys, I mean, I don't think that should be a reason that. The district should kind of shy away from supporting and promoting. This as an opportunity for. The kids. So I'd hate to see that kind of be the end result of this conversation.
I don't think it is, okay, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but I think we have every intention of. Offering middle school wrestling and, but we just could look to see compares what it looks like and what are other options, so. I'll have Jason, this is his homework. And, uh, we'll have him come back and, you know, share that with the board.
Yeah, and even if you have a couple of girls that want to. Can practice and practice with each other, not necessarily find matches, but I just think it's important to open up and say, this is also. A girl's sport, you know, like I think that that might grow it.
And as it becomes more, you know, popular, then even more girls would want to get involved, and then we could have a team and.
Tony, did they lay out any type of plans that they made to school team, or they're just going to leave it on the district to figure out?
Again, I, I'm gonna, I just mean, got it, I'm going to defer to Jason.
No, I know, I'm, I'm just curious if.
With no consideration for time.
No consideration of anything, change the rules, right? And no consideration for any female that wants to wrestle, which is ridiculous. You know, there's no plan, in fact, because there are rules. With athletics that you can't, if you're in a group one school, you cannot go to a group one, a group four school and participate in any athletic, even if that school doesn't have. The athletics, but there is a chance where. Maybe if there's only three girls. Right? If we look at this with my daughter with swimming. That they maybe can participate in the tournaments.
Oh, yeah.
The, the, the girls tournaments that are run with the other schools and when it comes to county tournament or state or co-op.
Yeah.
And everything like that.
It'd be part of the hundred and central where we got two girls, they could go there and.
But yeah, it's just, it's disappointing that they changed the rule and then they don't have a plan when they're. The reason why they're changing the rule is they're saying there's. A lot of women's wrestling teams down in high school, but then they don't have a plan for the smaller districts. And, and it's difficult.
Sounds like, so I'll just a couple of things, it sounds like this is early, and so by next fall. Well, you know, when, when these things will be sort of getting closer. Um, this may look very different than what it does tonight.
We don't release the information, they don't release the information if you don't have a plan.
Right, you know, like, but it looks bad on you that you didn't do what you're supposed to do.
As, and as Kevin said, we're being, you know, we were also against the manbills, the belt beers and the other group ones who. Who will be in the same boat because they are the same similar size blocks, so there may be an accommodation for us as smaller schools, but. That perhaps they, we can, we can make this work. Um, the tournaments is exactly what we used to do, you know, the wrestlers, they would go to Delphao and they would enter the tournaments and they would wrestle against kids from bigger schools. And it, and it worked well, I'd say possible as well. And I will say, and the other piece. So, you know, we do try to obviously provide opportunities for both. For all genders, for everybody here. We want everybody involved in things, including that at the desk and every other thing, um, we had a group of girls who came up a few years ago. And wanted to do a spring sport, they didn't want to do track and field and they didn't want to do softball, so they started the, uh, football team. They have a girls' football program, which is now in its third year. And, uh, that is an opportunity for girls to play, you know, something, I'm only saying that. Because if there was a group of girls here who said, we, we would like to maybe, you know, see another sport. That comes for girl. Um, perhaps they could then, you know. You know, bring it forward, propose it, see if there's interest. They wanted to do, you know, I don't know what there is, swimming probably all the question. But, uh.
Our student, my school board representative should, uh. Next year, maybe work with the middle school and. You know, become the, you know, or have representation, because I would love to see kids coming. You know, to the board.
It's just tough, like, and again, that's why, Mr. Miller. Um, because.
He's got a lot of homework.
Yeah, he's. I texted, but I don't know, yeah, um. The. You know. There's always a challenge because we are small. Hey, we start volleying tomorrow and it kills our basketball, you know what I mean? Like, so you're, that's what you kind of have to balance, you know.
Right.
You know, as far as what that looks like, but more to come, more information to come on this.
I have a question about the schedule, um, during the lunch period, is that just lunch or is it also?
Lunch and recess though, and I should have said that, we'll have two lunch periods, so it'll be a five, six lunch, or fifth and sixth period we'll eat together. And then a separate lunch period for seventh and eighth, and within the thirty minutes, kids can go outside.
And you change that on the slides or you send that?
Okay. Yeah, and again, we'll dig into that in more detail.
I think that'll be especially important to like the fifth grade, sixth, you know.
To what?
I, I'd say I think that having a, you know, the ability to go outside and have a recess period and maybe during that lunch, it says lunch right now.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I think it's good for all the kids, obviously, but especially the younger ones.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and to your point, there's also what Tony mentioned is that there is wellness and P E. Every day, uh, which is a, a very big difference to what our fifth graders are.
Yeah, it's great.
Any other question?
Oh, I just, there'll be a late bus for the after-school activity.
Okay. Uh, so that will come to be first period of public comments. Um, we will have a second period later in the meeting, but uh, this is an opportunity for. Uh, members of the public to come out forward and make statements with the board. Um, on any topic that's on the agenda or anything else that is, uh. Learned to you, um. I just will. Mention that if a member of the public becomes disruptive during the meeting. Um, I can warn you and any disruption, you're resulting in being. Prevented from speaking during public meeting or reading mood. Uh, disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors. Not that I expect any of these. Uh, such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption and use of profanity or comments. That are abusive, obscene or inflammatory. Um, we ask, uh, no participants can speak more than one story in public comments, and we ask that you. Uh, limit your comments to about three minutes. Um, with that, uh, please, if anyone missed someone they'd like to bring to the board, uh. Come to the podium, let us know your name and the town where you live and, uh. You know, for the hearing comments.
That's hard again, West Amwell. Um, the schedule looks great, um. I have two very different children. One child who that schedule probably would work perfectly for, and then one who I, I do have concerns. Um, I just was wondering if maybe during the parent, um. Information night, if you could go through what it would look like for a child who's O C R. Um. He is going to go from being in fourth grade, spending a great deal outside of the classroom to a great deal inside of the classroom, and I do have concerns. Of how that will affect his central auditory processing disorder, his A D H D and integrating from going from a class of nine to being in a class of seventeen to eighteen kids. So going to be a very big deal for him and a very big change for some of them.
So just so you know.
That won't that be that?
Uh, same program.
I know, but I, like, right now, he's only in the classroom for. Social studies twice a week, it's science.
That could be the same.
The same thing.
No changes. If it's, if a student has a special education program required O C R or whatever, it will be.
What would that look like for like, um? Sorry, the middle school is going to be a huge change for, for me looking at this stuff, but like for. Language and stuff like that, would he still be O C R for world, oh, okay. Right, so he would still be, okay. But maybe I just.
Yeah, we can elaborate that for the parent.
Yeah, world language, sorry.
So whether it's another program.
Right, yeah, I guess maybe elaborate a little more on what that would look like for special, special education students, because I'm sure I'm not going to be the only one. Ask questions, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to bring to the board?
Hi, Sharon Durkey, Lambertville, um, I was reading the, um, cooperation with law enforcement agencies regulation that is, um, on the agenda tonight. And I have a concern and a question about the specific procedures and responsibilities of school district staff for notifying parents in instances. Of law enforcement interviews involving their children. Um, school officials will not notify in instances of suspected child abuse or neglect. Shall notify, uh, parents when the student is the target of the law enforcement investigation. And shall notify parents. And guardians when a student is involved with or has interaction with law enforcement. That seems to encompass pretty much everything. Um, that would happen to a child's. Uh, involving law enforcement at school, but then it says, in all other instances. School authorities shall permit law enforcement authorities to determine whether or when. A student's parent should be contacted, and so this language sounds really vague to me. And I'm also really concerned because if my child's at school. And this interaction isn't either that my child is the target of an investigation or. That my child is involved with or has interaction with. What possibly is happening where my child? Is A involved with law enforcement? And how is it that the school is allowing law enforcement to decide whether or not I'm contacted? Um, I, if my child's at school. I believe that you are the ones who are supposed to be. Watching her and protecting her, but you're stepping back and letting law enforcement decide whether to contact me, so. In what instances could that possibly happen? Um, and if it's just kind of like other instances. Then I don't think it should be there at all because it makes me really uncomfortable that our kids are. It's like, well, maybe we're just going to let them decide whether to contact the parents.
My answer to that would be in more.
Listen, do you want me, do you want me to address that?
You can go first and then I'll follow, yeah, go for it.
So one of our other board members noted that Sharon, that there was a gap in that the parent should always be notified if your child has. Any interaction with law enforcement, and that needs to be very clear because the language. Is somewhat vague, and there should never be an incident where your child has any interaction, whether or not they're the target. Or somehow tangentially is, is been involved in law enforcement, that the parents always need to be notified by the school. So that edit is being made to that policy tonight, it just. We didn't get it into the document that is in the board docs, but you will hear that in my report, there will be a separate section with that language being.
Okay, so that's done.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I appreciate it, sure, thank you very much.
Uh, does anyone else have a comment they'd like to bring to the board?
We have an online comment.
We do. Had one. It is from Denise Vailow. From West Amwell, good evening, I'd like to inquire about the busing situation for the softball team. It is my understanding that the team is once again sharing a bus with a regular drop-off room. Including middle school and high school students, the bus is extremely crowded. Between the regular students and the softball team, school backpacks and softball. Putting in bags for practice last year was made a priority to get the teacher. Or the team their own bus, Mr. Rubelo drove the team to the field on behalf of the softball team, it'd be greatly appreciated, once again. Team could have a similar setup the last year. This would ensure the bus is not overcrowded and the team arrives in sufficient time for practice. But more importantly, for upcoming games, it is critical that they have adequate warm-up time prior to games, thank you very much for your consideration.
The one thing I will say to that is we've been monitoring since the day we started. Softball team is arriving at three oh four each and every day, Amanda is going herself. They're actually off the field before our baseball team is even on the field here at home. So, um, you know that we put a lot of time and effort into this. We're sodding the new field, that we're getting ready hopefully to be able to utilize by May first. Board approved that, we're doing everything that we possibly can. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Rubelo is not available to do a bus run after school every day. Like he was last year, um. That's kind of really all I have.
And, and this is, so they are sharing a bus, they're one of the first drop-offs, if not the first drop-off. Of a bus that is also dropping off other students. But, um. This is a, this is a, going to be a half-year, so a half-season solution because. We hope that by the end of April or May, they will be playing on the ball field here. So, um.
Anyone else in the public, Aaron, anyone else, um? For the public. There will be. If there is none, uh, closing period of public comments, there will be another opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Uh, and then we'll go to our committee reports, uh, again, with our buildings, grounds. Uh, transportation, finance and safety, uh, Mr. Keys, our chairman. Mr. Keys, our chairman, is about this evening. We did meet on Thursday and discussed the budget as well as all of the other items that's here. So if it's time, I might as well ask a motion to approve items A through B. Oh, it's sort of been better prepared. So I'll need a motion to approve items A through O, and then we can discuss individual items, answer questions. So move by Martha, thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
A second by Jen, thank you very much. Any discussion on the buildings and grounds items for this? As Mr. Suso noted in the report, the we are going to be, we are going to be voting on a preliminary budget. The preliminary budget can be changed over the next five weeks, but without the final budget. The preliminary budget will have a tax increase of two point five percent. That is down from what we were originally projected. But it was still a little higher than our two percent, which is what we normally do because of the uncertainty surrounding that probably.
No, Karen, hold on, it's not normally, though.
It was the last.
You just did the last three years, but that's the only shit. So it's not a normal process. It's just we weren't able to keep it that way because of great budgeting and 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 things like that. But now, obviously, what's going on is just not working.
It's not normal for other districts.
Yeah. Yes.
And just to add on, it 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 also is because of the healthcare cost increase, correct?
Yes.
It's not just the federal fund issue.
And it's individual.
And the negotiations with the current.
There's a lot of, lot of.
Falls. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Many other districts are looking at increasing. Higher than.
Right. I I write past a six percent referendum bill board every day, so.
So just for clarification purposes, this vote actually includes G, correct?
This vote, we're voting on all of the items.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Yes, yes, but we're, yes, we're voting on the preliminary.
Thank you.
That's why I was I was going through. Any questions on any of the items? The time to answer.
Yeah, I have a question on on G, on the resolution. The, I was just curious about the six hundred and fifty thousand from capital reserve. The draw.
But you brought part of that is for the field turf.
Okay, that's all.
The field turf, the turf project, and then a hundred fifty thousand of that is for the parking lot outside of the.
Thank you.
In this, in this, among these things that we're approving, we're also approving our budget for preschool expansion aid. This is a final budget, but we will send that to the state and once that is approved. And that will fund the preschool program for next year. We are also seeking opening up bids, which would actually do the construction on the track project. I understand that they have started the commenting process. So as we have that work done over the.
And this is our preliminary budget that we're gonna submit to the county.
Yeah, the preliminary budget will go to the county. The county business administrator has to approve, has to sign off on everything. They have their own. And they will review it, then they will send it backwards. And then we will have a public hearing before our April meeting, at which time we will discuss the budget, the final budget in more detail at the April meeting with the final budget. Again, the preliminary budget that we sent to the county can be changed anytime up to that final meeting. So within the next five weeks, then as we, as things happen and things develop and things changes, we can still make a go. And historically, we have, you know, budgets have changed.
In terms of the public hearing that you said, is it a public meeting of the board?
It's a public meeting, we hold a hearing basically as part of the board meeting.
Okay.
So we have to take the same approach as I did with the report tonight. There has to be a, I present the budget, similar to what I did at the work session, and then there has to be a public comment just on the budget.
Okay.
Then the board do.
Thank you.
Any other questions on items A through O? No other question? I will vote. Ready with Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Being of the Shetty?
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Running Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallo?
Yes.
Curriculum and Technology, Mr. Strauss? Oh, personnel, I skipped right over, sorry. Sorry.
That's okay. That that was absolutely. We had a meeting on March thirteenth. We went over the personnel actions and appointments that are on this evening's agenda. The superintendent also discussed the student safety data systems report that was presented earlier in this meeting. The superintendent also provided the committee with an update of the district's non-impoundment review process. We were advised that negotiations with SHREA are ongoing. We were given an update on the high school principal position search, which was covered earlier tonight, Tony. The Tony also advised the committee that he'd be announcing staffing assignments for the twenty five, twenty school year. And let us know that he and Jane Ellen were going to be attending the NJ Striker short job fair on Thursday of this week. And then finally, there are a number of open positions in the district, which include five through eight art, French, and Spanish teachers, a student assistance counselor, and a learning disabilities teaching. And with that, I'd like to move. Items. Andy.
Second. Second, like Devon, I can. Any additional items to end it? Uh, let's vote. Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jim Machete?
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallo?
Yeah. Now, I'm sorry.
I blame the lack of light in my whole eyes.
So we met on Tuesday, March eleventh. We went over briefly the Wellness Day and a few takeaways is that our sessions that were led by our staff were all full. We had both art therapy and yoga led by members of the community. And also, a very large shout out was given to our PTO for their participation in the day. We also got a, an update on the Performing Arts Academy Advisory Meeting. It was attended by staff, a rep from Music Mountain Theater, the Polytech Superintendent, and then two of us were also there as as parents and board members. Our next meeting is set for four thirty. So we do have to have two of them before we create, we can submit the curriculum for the performing arts, the Arts Academy to the state. And our next steps are to create that curriculum, which is in process right now, establish a post-secondary partnership, which Dr. Letzko is working on, and applying for that CIP codes, which again, will come after that four thirty meeting. We also got a brief update on the Gifted and Talented Parent Advisory Committee meeting that was happening directly afterwards. And we are going to have a Gifted and Talented update at the May board meeting. We did dive in pretty deeply into our grades nine and ten English curriculum that is being piloted. It's Common Lit is is what it's called. We are going to be using the assessment package, and it includes both studies of actual books and then also thematic units that are around authentic text excerpts, poetry, multimedia, and nonfiction. All of these go into the standards that are set by the state. We are currently piloting one unit of lessons plans, and those units are science fiction and social commentary and people and their environment. We do have teachers doing both of those at the ninth and tenth level. And this also includes standards-based reading and writing rubrics that can be used across all of our professional learning communities, which means that social studies, science can take those rubrics and use those standards for all of their writing as well. There's a data component. I know we talk a lot about data, and this will consistently be used across the grade levels. And we also went over the the general process as we select these programs for the pilots. We did table our middle school math courses for next month as we had another meeting coming in on our heels, but we'll be sure to deal with that. I have nothing to move.
Policy, all right, we have several items for first read. We have an exciting one, which doesn't usually happen in policy. But there is a new policy that's been mandated by the NJSIAA, which is requiring all member schools to adopt a spectator code of conduct policy during this current school year. For incidences of unsportsmanlike conduct as set forth in the policy, the policy must require immediate removal of a person or persons from the event and the school premises, minimum disciplinary measures, including the approach to multiple violations in a defined period, thus creating a disciplinary framework, and an appeals process. There is optional language that's included in the policy for other changes. You do have to refer to their additional guidance. The policy applies to high school only. For our disciplinary framework, we do have a breakdown of first offense. And I will note that for different sports, there's a slightly different framework. It's a little bit different for football based on the abbreviated season. So for example, for a first offense for football, there would be a suspension from attending the next one home game. For all other sports, it would be a suspension from attending the next two home games. For second offense for football, it's three home games. For all other sports, it's five. For the third offense, three strikes, you're out, you're you're suspended going forward. There is discretion at rest with the superintendent after consultation with the principal to increase disciplinary actions. And we have, or we recommend, we are recommending to accept all of the options related to conduct at away games, conduct at the last event at an activity season, and suspensions that extend to other sports and activities. So I would, I would say, and I should note that there has been conversation with the athletic directors to confirm their ability to enforce these provisions because it is a certain amount of record keeping that has to go on. And I would ask board members, this is an impactful one to our community, to go ahead and read this. And if you have any comments to to let me know. Student smoking, there's the policy and the regulation five, five, three, three on student smoking. The change is mandatory, and it relates to updates to the memo of understanding related to electronic smoking devices, particularly for the use of, excuse me, tobacco products, which is illegal on school grounds, but also to make sure that we're incorporating the extent to which there's a suspicion that anybody is using a controlled substance or cannabis in an electronic smoking device and the appropriate report to law enforcement. So recommending that we would, on our second read, accept those changes. Any question on the items for first read? We do have several items for the second read. Those include the policy and regulation seven, four, four, one on electronic surveillance, which we discussed last month. That has to do with schools that have the video surveillance equipment and the ability for law enforcement to turn that on during emergency situations only, which has to be documented. So we are recommending to move that forward to or for approval. And as was discussed earlier, cooperation with law enforcement. The changes that were mandated were fairly discreet. It had to do with the addition of the handle with care program and also adding the language or other drugs in relation to cannabis. But there was the recommendation by Michael Strauss, which we are adding the language, and that's actually going to be in section three, C. Language will be added that school officials shall notify parents and guardians when a student is involved with or has interaction with law enforcement. So that's not in your materials, but we are recommending that that language be added. And just as a last item, and I apologize for not raising this earlier. We have spoken about this was a, but the change that we are making as a district was not mandated on the policy and regulation five, one, one, seven on inter-district school choice program to add language recognizing a priority for applicants who have siblings who are in the program. And it didn't get into the materials, but we had talked about that.
Yeah, and it's actually in the policy already, we just covered, so that was the reason why we didn't.
Well, there you go, we're ahead of ourselves. So I would like to move the policy and regulation seven, four, four, one, and policy and regulation nine, three, two, oh, with the that it's referenced for the.
So we, we were on the.
We had to update this and come back to it, like that language?
No, it's, it's updated on.
Oh, it is there.
Yeah, I added it.
Sorry.
Okay, can I just ask a question about the update? And let me first say my.
Because she's made a motion to approve the set of policies on the first read and set of policies on the second read. Let's, let's complete that by getting a second, and then we'll discuss.
Exactly.
So a second by Michael, thank you. Now, please.
Sorry.
No.
My bad. Proportions. The, I apologize to the board and to the committee for not being available at the committee meeting. But I do have a question related to the add-on that you've noted. I did read it. Can you explain to me how it relates to the child abuse neglect exception within the context of a policy?
It would.
So that there would.
So if there's an issue with child abuse neglect, that you notify the CPD and the police, what else? No, there.
Okay, and that's, it's written in a way that reflects that?
Right.
Okay. So C is what portion?
C is just, and here's the reality.
It's it's more, I'm sorry, it's more a portion of like, what's A and B? Because I don't have it in front of me and I have.
This is what I'll say as far as practice, right? If a police officer comes in the building and says, well, we want to meet with John, no, that's not happening without a parent being notified and a parent being here. They can't even really, you know, can't meet with a kid just for the sake of meeting with a kid. Right, so I mean, I've had that experience my whole career, right? Where obviously, we're notifying the parent, the parent, the police officer just can't meet with a kid in the classroom, in the accounting office without a parent. Nothing happens.
If there's an incident on campus that constitutes a crime, and they're like interviewing kids as witnesses.
They're not doing that.
They don't do that either, right?
Or if they're doing it, they're doing, they're not doing that.
They're not doing it. And then a parent has to bring the.
That's police work. So what we'll say that a parent is, the law enforcement officer is going to contact you. I'm going to want you to come down with your child and meet the police station. They're not conducting an investigation like all of us.
We can.
We'll conduct an investigation without them if we need to. The thing is, what the issue is, but they're, they're not going to be meeting with kids, just for the kids without parents here under our roof, that we do that down at your station, it's not here. What's not happening?
We can fairly easily address your concern, Erin, and I don't know what we need to do procedurally. But A is that school officials shall not notify the student's parents in the instance of suspected child abuse or neglect. C is what we added, school officials shall notify parents when a student is involved with or has interaction with law enforcement. It can easily say, except as indicated above.
Perfect.
And then you're.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thanks. The lawyers are doing.
We can do that quick. We can, I think we can.
We'll say, we'll amend our motion, right? This will prove it with that new language.
With that edit.
Yeah. Can I just say, so, so the version of this call, of this regulation that's on the attached to the agenda?
Post-update, I updated yesterday.
But D is still there.
There is, there was, so, so the original policy, if you remember the email that I communicated with you guys yesterday, I, there was an A, B, and C. Right, I added an additional letter, and now there's D. And the letter C that you're looking at in that regulation was not there before.
So, but D still says in all other instances, school authority shall permit law enforcement authority to determine whether or when a student's parent should be contacted. So, and I think C is great, but there's still D, which still has this in all other instances language, which seems like it might be in conflict with what's intended by, so can we still see? I don't need to believe for the point, but I just want to make sure what we said. I don't need to believe for the point, but I just want to make sure what we said.
See, what, what, they look at it today.
If you like that, doesn't just, isn't more than a catch-all, then we can, we can get rid of it, but I agree.
Table four, we'll go down. So now we have an amended motion to, for Martha's going to make.
I make an amended motion to withdraw?
To approve, to approve.
Just, just.
Policy P fifty-five thirty-three.
And regulation and the, and matching regulations.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's any issue with seven, four, four, one and regulation, seven, four, four, one.
Right.
It's the other two, nine, three, two, four, that we call policy, regular, right? Okay, so, so moved, meaning another second now.
Second.
Second by Aaron, thank you. Any discussion on those policy? I do have a question with regard to spectator code of conduct. That is, um, kind of, uh, we have, typically, we do have, we do have adults, this is Phillips, uh, Mr. Bill historically would be at basketball games. And that, you know, you see it at basketball games, you have a crowd and they're indoors, and you can actually hear what people are saying as opposed to a football game where you may not be able to. Um, but they will address when somebody is sort of out of line in the stands. Um, but this is kind of like requiring, then we have to have somebody there, so.
Correct, and just a little background, the athletic directors for our conference all got together and developed the consequences consistently. So every school is going to adopt in our conference, the same level of consequence. But you're right, the other thing too comes into play with ejection. So, you know, if someone was ejected by a football official or at a basketball game, whatever, that's going to automatically trigger the foul.
So it could be.
Could be either, could be a school person or a person representing the school.
Correct.
Could be the referee, basketball referees will throw people out if they are, you know, being a not prescribed. Um, I guess the other, uh, there was something about that one there, but. Any other questions about policy?
There is a long list of conduct that's included in that policy to take a look at.
What I wanted to ask was if, if a parent has an away game. So if I go to Belvedere.
There's a call.
And I act like a jabroni.
Yeah.
In the stands of Belvedere.
Yeah.
And they throw me out in Belvedere, they're going to let Jason Miller know, and he's going to be like, what the hell are you doing? You can't come to the.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's a, there, we're opting, opting in if you look at the policy. Um, I'll pull it up real quick.
Yeah, it's under three C.
Uh, which one is it, Martha?
It's three C, isn't it?
Three C.
Not held.
Not held, yep, right here. The policy will come into play.
Not to belabor this, now you've said that the athletic directors got together with that particular policy in our, they, they recommending to their boards that that also be adopted, so that across the board, we don't have people come in here from.
Married, every, every district policy in our conference will be exactly the same. Continue learning, you're right.
Yeah, so cooperative behaviors throughout the conference.
And now the other issue too is keep in mind, for most school districts have video, everything, right? So it's in a gym or whatever, you know, we've already, we had that issue earlier this year on, unfortunately, at middle school event where one of our parents was not, and the whole thing was on video, like we were in this, showing on the other school. I don't know if you saw, but in Pennsylvania, went to Pennsylvania, they would say state playoff game. And parents got involved at this point, three minutes left in the game. And they ended up stopping, they ended up stopping the game. And initially they declared that the team that was leading at that point was the winner. And then they said, you know what, both of these teams forfeit, they're out of the state playoffs, and we'll just put somebody else on that spot. Talking, you know, conduct, parents, hey, the worst thing about youth sports is, I mean, the parents, excuse me. One thing about youth sports, your parents, maybe one of them, so, uh, uh, but, uh, you know, this, this is good. Sorry, it fell along. Okay, uh, any other discussion on the policies? Um, it's not the most fun. Jennifer Pichetti?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Aaron Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallo?
Yes. Uh, it's one more.
Yes, school and community met on March eleventh, which is the same day that Michael said we had lots of back-to-back meetings. So we had a short meeting, but it was also, yes, in terms of what we, what we discussed. We reviewed the climate survey and made some recommendations for some additional, um, questions and ways to gain additional information. Um, one of the things that we had, uh, added to the climate survey last year was a text box for every question. So people can, um, provide detail, um, or engage rather than waiting until we can, where there's text uh, box, and we don't necessarily know what comments relate to, back to which question. Um, we also talked about celebrating student achievement. Um, with the success of the news bites, we're going to be adding a student spotlight that will alternate with the news bites and really highlight the achievements of individuals. Um, so that will be starting. Um, we talked about other ways that the Board of Ed can honor student groups in our meetings. Um, and, um, some of the options for that. And we also talked about the significant drop in the number of the harassment intimidation and bullying reports this year. Um, and as Tony said, expressing our appreciation for, um, all of the work that went into that and the LEF funding for those anti-bullying programs, um, over the past few years. Uh, we talked about student volunteerism. Uh, one of the goals, long range goals that we talked, that we talked about, um, for the committee would be to, um, work towards connecting students to larger community, which is a part of our strategic plan. And we know that there are opportunities for student volunteerism currently, including the key club. And then there's also a brag sheet that is used by the guidance department to help, um, collect information about when kids have gone out and done a community service. So introducing that brag sheet earlier in the students', um, progress in high school would get hopefully encouraged more volunteering. And we talked about, um, a media alert, uh, highlighting a new scholarship that's been established to honor a past hundred, um, seven hundred. And that is it, nothing.
Right. Definitely. Yeah. Um.
Any question?
And yes, that's my, discussion on that. Um, so, uh, we do have one, uh, item under, uh, uh, or at something, so perhaps an intimidation and bullying report. Again, we were, we, we go into executive session at the end of each month meeting and discuss these. And then we come out into the regular session, uh, the next month's meeting. Um, and we vote to approve or not to approve the, the finding by our investigators. So we will be voting on what was discussed in February. Um, we do have, we had one investigation in February. It was not, it was permanently not to be the needed criteria for harassment, intimidation, bullying. It's not being the bill of, on, on consequence for whatever this behavior was, but it does need, but it's not be that narrowly defined state statute. Boy, um, we need a motion to approve that in a second. I know, we thank you, it's by Michael, thank you. Any discussion, very limited in what we can say about this. Well, I'll say it's a discussion, all in favor.
All right.
All right. Both. We did have fire and safety drills, those dates and times were reported on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Suzo, you have a, um, update here. And that is available on the website as well, um, on the agenda. Um, so now we come to the second period of public comments, uh, same rules as the first. If you have something you'd like to bring to the board, please come to the podium, uh, state your name and let us know what community you're from, and let us know what topic you're on. Uh, with that, uh, public comment is open, because I mean, if that's something I'd like to bring into the board. Do we have any online help? Okay. Um, doesn't seem that there was any public comment this evening. So I will, well, it was the second period of public comment. Do you have a need to go into executive session, do you think, for purposes of district's million, but you perhaps haven't, uh, reported as well as, uh, a personal health update? Um, so we, I made a motion to go into executive session.